Okay, welcome everybody to the zoning board of appeals for the village of Tuckahoe for the month of December 2020. Nancy, if you would please take the roll.
Yes, Member Garrity. Member Palladino.
Present.
Member Jackman.
Present.
Member Fury.
Present.
And Chairman Ringwald.
I am present. While I think he's trying to sign in, I don't see him, but I would like to welcome Mike Martino, our newest member to the zoning board of appeals as an ad hoc member. He's a welcome addition and he is official effective this meeting. He's a managing partner in a managing and consulting consulting firm. And he has a lot of expertise in construction management, so he should be a very good addition to this board. And if he didn't hear that, I'll repeat it next month. With that being said, the first order of business will be the approval of the minutes from November the 4th, 2020. Does any member have any comments? Is everything in order? Anything not in order?
No, everything good.
Does anybody have a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Nancy, please pull the board.
Member Garrity. Member Palladino.
In favor.
Member Jackman.
In favor.
Member Fury.
In favor.
And Chairman Ringwald.
In favor. So tonight we have a very brief agenda. The four other items have been adjourned, 69 Main Street, 22 Underhill Street, 70-72 Marvel Dale and 174 Marvel Dale have all adjourned for the evening, which brings us to the one and only, which is-
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I got ahold of Mr. Burke. He asked for just a couple minute recess so we can, uh, he can get everything up and running.
All right, if he gets it up and running, should we start all over and?
No, I think all he did was the minutes. That's fine. It's recording, so I think we're gonna have it and we're gonna be able to, you know, the public doesn't talk about the minutes. It's just you members that voted on it, so I think we're fine.
Okay, we'll take, uh, we'll take five. Welcome to anyone who is having trouble signing in. We had some technical difficulties this evening. This is the zoning board of appeals meeting for the village of Tuckahoe for the month of December 2020. We've already taken the roll call and we have already approved the minutes from the previous meeting. We have one applicant present who is going to, who is asking for an area variance for a pool deck. 15 Hollywood Avenue East. Is the applicant present? And if so, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, yes, we're present. My name is Jorge Pava and my wife is-
Lorian Pava.
And we live at 15 Hollywood Avenue East.
Thank you. So welcome. Would you like to give us a brief overview of what it is you're looking for from the zoning board of appeals?
Uh, yes Chairman. Is it possible to share my screen to share the presentation that I have put together?
Gary, you have to give him permission?
He should have permission. He should be able to do it.
Okay.
Yes, go right ahead.
Real briefly guys, I don't want to take anybody's time here. Basically, this is, this is at the, at the end of last summer, prior to the pool, to the pool that it's already been inspected and accepted by the town. As you could see on this side, I have a gap between my existing retaining wall and this side of the pool. I've actually torn my ligaments towards the end of last summer. Fell while I was cleaning around the pool. Therefore, I had to place a chair in there, if you could see it. Now, the other thing, actually the main purpose of this build was to put a small platform back here behind this pool in order to solve, to put a solar cover reel, which I have since my pool does not have a heater. Again, it's not meant, it's not meant to be a deck. It's, it's, it's not meant to be used as a deck. It's simply to hold a pool reel for the, as long as the pool is open. As you could see in the next one, this is what the existing condition is right now, so this summer. Right? I have covered that gap and made it seamless, so there is no more full hazard. And in the back, you can see that the pool reel takes most of the area back there. So again, that area is not designed for hanging out, for playing, for anything other than just reel the pool, put, cover the pool and uncover the pool. And that's it. And now actually also it's, uh, it's safe for everybody. Now, there's some, again, privacy concerns. Correct? That I'm aware that, that neighbors around us have presented. So again, I have some pictures here that I put side by side with some brief descriptions as a state of what this place looked like before we moved in. As you could see here on the left side, this yard was abandoned and completely trashed. And for the neighbors behind us, there was absolutely nothing there. You could see the existing retaining wall and the depression that was there before with the pool is now. You see a bunch of abandoned bushes, weeds and everything was terrible. Actually with the new now, again, and in my plan, I showed that the back, a handrail, if you will, it's, it's actually, it serves as a privacy fence. And I have a greenery, artificial greenery that covers it and it makes it look as a bush. Do you can actually see that the actual handrail, which is a privacy screen, gives us more privacy than before.
How tall is that rail?
So that rail is only a 42 inches right now.
Thank you.
And, and if needed and if required, I can make that taller. That's not a problem. As I said, I, I, you know, that, that platform is not there to pry on anybody. It's just, it's, it's just there to hold a pool reel. Again, again, old picture from, from when we first moved in, you could see that you could see straight from the standing on top of the existing patio. You could see right into our neighbor's yard. Now, when you stand on top of that patio with, thanks to the privacy screen, you could actually not see them and they can't see us. Okay, so again, that's, that's just the side. That's the picture on the left, as you can see how the yard used to be. But no one would actually go there because it was overgrown and abandoned. I managed to put new pavers and put some privacy trees on the side along with the pool fence.
That's on the south side of your house?
Uh, yes. Actually, that's on the north side of the house.
So that's next to 17?
Yes, that is next to 17.
Thank you.
All right. And then, as you can see, I put the picket fence also there before. Prior to that, there was no picket fence. There was no trees. There was just a bunch of ivy that was taking over and at the request of my favor from 17, we actually cleaned it out.
So all of that work that you did, you got the proper permits for that?
Well, yes, for all the pool is absolutely permitted and inspected.
Good.
And the fences. Everything is permitted. So everything that you see existing and in, with the exception of the, of the deck and the privacy screen, has been permitted and inspected and closed down by the town.
Good. Thank you.
Again, and now another, um, this picture on the left, right? Right, the picture right there is taken from my existing yard. And looking at, at, uh, at 17. Uh, again, it's the geography of the land of our house is higher than everybody's. I, it's, it's, it just so happens to be the, the pool platform deck that we built is exactly at that height. It's not going, it's not a towering, it's not a towering platform. We're not climbing up to look at anybody. It's simply there for us to use it, just for the pool reel and for us to get safely there.
How high is that pool and deck off the ground?
Uh, it's about 48 inches.
Thank you.
It's 48 inches from the lower ground and it, and the ground slopes, so the adjacent yard, it's actually starts at the, at the height of the pool and then tapers down. So when it gets towards the back of the pool, it's only like four inches underneath it. And the deck is, it's, it's in between there. Here, again, this picture here on the right is taken from the existing home deck. And, you know, that, that was built back in the eighties. And again, as you could see, due to the, the geography of the land, we are higher than everybody else. That's why we have a view of, of everybody else. It's, yeah, this is our neighbors of 13, Tom is Ukraine. Again, I could also see into their backyard and it's not prying or anything. It's just naturally. And again, a picture from my neighbors behind where actually I'm standing inside in my living room and I could see back into them and actually due to the, due to the privacy fence, I could see less of them now. So hopefully, after showing these, some of these privacy concerns have been addressed, that again, it's, it's just there to provide a safe way for us to keep our pool real. It's not meant a hangout. It's not to pry, to pry on anybody. It's not higher than anything else on the property. It's the same level as my backyard.
I, I can appreciate that. I have a question. If you're not going to use it, why is it the same level as the pool? Why wouldn't you say, you know, drop it down a couple of feet or something?
Wouldn't that be a tripping hazard? We're gonna have something-
If you're only using it to, to house a reel, a solo wrap, what difference does it make?
I, I mean, if that's required, I could. But then again, I would just be creating. I stepped down into, into, to get from the side of the pool down into that back platform.
So originally you built the pool without anything back there, correct? The first picture you showed us?
Yeah, the, this is the pool which was inspected. And as you could see on the left-hand side, there's a huge hole.
Runs along.
You know, and we did have an incident of Jorge tripping and hurt himself because there's a hole there.
So just, I'm just curious, why would you build a pool like that and not have some, you know, deck or something around it to protect yourself?
Well, I, again, I just-
Well, we just, last year when we put the pool, we just, we thought, you know, let's get the pool in and then we could figure out what to do. Then it was this year, you know, in March, April, and with COVID, we had some extra time. And then we started thinking about what we could do, you know, because we didn't realize that it's kind of a falling hazard.
No, I can appreciate that, but I, you know, I'm, I'm pretending I'm like your neighbor or whatever. And if that deck goes all the way back to the white fence, then, you know,
Yeah, it's pretty short, about five feet. I mean, again, I have, I will guarantee and send pictures of the dimension, but it definitely does not go all the way back to, to, to the, to the white fence. It does not.
Yeah, but back to your point of you're only, you only want to house this solar panel or whatever, solar cover, sorry. If you were to lower that to make it less usable, so that you couldn't say go back there on that gray area, right, where you're pointing and then hang out. I mean, as it is now, you could, you could go all the way back to the fence, right?
Well, I, I guess-
You say that's not your plan, but you, I mean, you could.
But I-
Have a pool party and people could be standing back there.
I bet, yes, but typically though, we always, we always stay as you can see the chairs and everything else is out here.
Chairman, if I may. Um, one of the issues here, Jorge, is that we have received multiple photos from your neighbors of people doing exactly that. It's a hangout area. They're leaning over the yard. That it, that is a common use space as far as we can tell from the evidence we were given. So we do, I, you know, let's just be honest about how we're using it. You know, you, if you're following code, you're following code, which sounds like, you know, if your numbers are correct here, that might be the case. But, you know, let's, uh, let's be honest about how we're using it, is what I would say.
Okay. All right. And again, thanks for that. Yes, there's bolts go, when we're in the pool, bolts go there. Stuff goes there. People go there to take out stuff, but I guarantee it, and I'm being 100% honest with you guys. Nobody hangs out there, standing there, sunning there. There's no furniture back there. And yes, people, I go there to clean the pool as well, which I would do on the, if, if there was no deck, I would also set up a ladder to clean and vacuum my pool every weekend. So maybe that's what the pictures are for. I mean, it, it, yes, when people come over, they might go back there, but nobody hangs out permanently there. I'm not hosting a party with, 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 there's, there are multiple people back there.
Okay. Anything else you want to present? Well, I'm sorry, Nathan, did you have another question?
Just for the records, and some people made up, have been in the work session, Jorge. We did ask in the work session that you provide, sorry, Tom, what is it? Sealed and signed?
Signed and sealed drawings, yes.
And sealed drawings, because when we're dealing something like this, and this happens quite a bit, Jorge, you're not alone here, is that we have such small properties here in Tuckahoe that we have to be very careful about where the property lines are, where we're building structures. And, you know, of course, if you're following those, those guidelines as we discussed, you know, that's a different discussion than if we're within that five feet buffer we talked about. So the first step for any folks watching at home is we are gonna ask for new drawings so we can make a decision based on actual, you know, signed off measurements between property line and deck structures. But for the folks who are here, the thing to understand is that, I mean, our inspector can, can clarify if I say anything incorrectly, that the code in the village does actually allow you to build a pool or a deck surrounding a pool within five feet, uh, excuse me, up to five feet of the property line. So that is allowed by code in the village, which I find to be very close to property lines, but that is what it is. It's five feet to the property line. So code is the code. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
So then he's within-
I, I, I think I, I think I have, is there anything you would like to say, Lorian?
I guess the one main thing I'd like to say, which I think the pictures show, before we installed the pool or the pool deck, we were able to see the property behind us. And we were able to see the property to the side of us. So that's nothing new. Having the pool and the pool deck, we can still see it, but we could, we saw it before, you know, and they saw us before.
And now we see this.
So, and now I think we actually see a little bit less behind us, you know, because of that privacy screen. So, you know, and the reason is, is because the elevation that we're higher, that we've always seen more, you know, so.
The, I, I would say I understand that quite a bit. I mentioned a very similar situation in my backyard. However, I'd say the big difference is that when you're standing back, you know, put yourself in your neighbor's shoes, it's a very different situation when someone's standing, you know, 30 feet back on their deck versus standing, you look over and they're standing five feet from your property line, 15 feet in the air. I'm just, you know, I understand you're within your rights if that's the case, but you have to understand from their perspective, all of a sudden someone's right over your property. So it's a different feel versus someone standing behind their house and looking at your-
Correct, and, and correct and understood. And that's why, like I said, if, if, you know, if allowed or if required, I would make that privacy fence higher if needed.
All right, let's not-
I make it five feet. If I'm allowed, then they'd never see us anymore. That, that is not a problem.
Yeah, even the fence- we would have liked to make that bigger, but we were following the code and we only left it at the six feet from the ground. If you want us to make that N feet or, or whatever, you know, the height you would let us make, we'd be happy to raise up that fence.
Absolutely.
We were actually trying to follow the rules with that.
And the same, the same applies to this fence right here on the side. I inquire when I was with, uh, not with Bill, but with Michael, if I'm able to raise this higher. And he said, no, that it maxes allowed six feet. And that was it. So, but again, as you could see from before, before we move, before we moved in, there was no fence there whatsoever. None. It was nothing. It was just dead plants. Now, there's actually, you could see that there's a fence all along there.
That is correct. So yes, you could seek a variance to increase the size of the fence both on the side and on the back. I, I don't want to get ahead of ourselves. What you are requesting is a variance because according to the denial letter, it says your deck areas not to exceed one quarter of the area of the pool.
Right.
And it does. So that's what you're seeking a variance for.
Correct, correct. But at the same time, Chairman, if there is something that, you know, that needs to be done to make life easier or, or, you know, appease anybody else that feels invaded by this, even though I, we're willing to do it. Again.
No, that's great. That's great. But I think we need to take first things first, so to speak.
Not a problem.
All right. So this work that you have done, this gray area that you pointed out, that, that is already done. It's in place, correct?
Yes. Yes, it is.
So, as mentioned, I think before we can go any further, we're going to need the signed and sealed drawings from you.
Okay.
Also, I'd also ask if you could sketch out what it would look like if you did not need a variance from us.
Okay.
What could you do, you know?
Right, okay, yes, correct. And I actually, I actually have an idea of what that would be. It, it would be just this back here going across.
All right.
That meets the square.
Drawing first for the next meeting, that would be most helpful.
That's not a problem. Yep.
And then, as we discussed, if we jump ahead and you're going to request a variance to raise the fences, you know, that would be something else we could obviously consider. But before we get to that, I'd like to make sure that one, you are, what you, you know, stated in your drawings, that you're five or six feet away from the back, that everything is, you know, copacetic and, um, we'll, we'll take it from there.
Okay, perfect.
We need more information from you. Does anybody, any other member have any points or questions I'd like to ask? Did we miss anything?
No, everything else, everything was asked.
Jorge, do you have anything else you'd like to present? I know we discussed we'd make this brief and because we're going to have to go through it again next month.
Uh, no, no, sir. I think, I think we've made all the, the points that we wanted to. And again, if anything is needed in order for us to, you know, to leave this in place and any other work that we need to do in order to make everybody happy, then we're wide open for it.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much.
Tom?
Somebody saying anything? No?
Yeah, hi, Tom.
No, you have to wait a second, Val.
Oh, okay, sorry. Sorry.
I'm going to make a motion to open the public hearing on 15 Hollywood Avenue East. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, is there anyone from the public that would like to make a comment regarding 15 Hollywood Avenue East for the area variance for a pool deck? Please state your name and address for the record and proceed.
Oh, hi, Tom. It's Valerie Hexner, seven, and Richard Hexner, 17 Hollywood Avenue. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Okay, so in this meeting, is, is this where we discuss what Jorge just spoke of or do we reemail Mr. Bill?
This is, this is your opportunity to, you know, make any comments or suggestions or lodge complaints, anything that you would like to state regarding this request for a variance. You're allowed to speak on it this time.
Okay, so well, let me first start by saying that I'm not asking or looking for their pool, their patio or this illegal deck to be torn down. I just want to ensure that it's been done right. What I don't understand is, um, now I am, or was friendly with the pavers. I know that they were, uh, when they did this original pool install last summer, 2019, they wanted to go all around their pool. And from what I understand from Lori Pava is that they were denied then. So they went forward with a patio and the install of the pool, but they didn't go all the way around because the building department told them that they couldn't. At least that's what Lori Pava told me back then, when it was being constructed. Again, I don't have a problem with the pool. I don't have a problem with any of it. While being constructed though, and when it was all said and done, you know, last year was different from this year. Last year, I didn't spend every day of my life in my backyard. I was very busy with two Eastchester Little League teams, a special needs Little League team. And then first week of August, we go right into Blue Devil football. So I'm a mom on the run with two children, very involved in sports. Uh, I did see the construction of the pool. Matter of fact, I thought it was a great idea. Why not drop a pool in that spot? It's a good idea, you know, I'm, I'm all for it. And then they built their patio around it. That's not a deck. That first part is a patio. Now with the patio, there has to be proper drainage in place. Okay, so, that is a five-foot wall. They built a five-foot high and five-foot left to right cinder block wall right on the property line in order to make their patio. So there's a retaining wall that follows from the front of the house all the way down to the back of the house. And the retaining wall starts off very small, maybe about a foot. And as you continue down our yard, our, our, my yard follows the grade going downhill. Obviously, it's their retaining wall, so their property stays elevated over mine. You get to the end of the retaining wall, it's now five feet high. So I'm five feet below and they're five feet high. They then extended that existing retaining wall with hideous cinder block right on the property line. Okay, so the wall that supports their patio is basically draining water on my property. When it rains, it doesn't matter. I mean, they can have company, people drip drying from the bathing suits. The wall is always wet. The wall is soaking wet. On top of that cinder block wall that's five feet high, they then put a three-foot picket fence. I'm not really sure why somebody would choose picket, but they did. I saw all of this in 2019, but again, didn't really like, I was like, okay. Gee, is that wall staying? I didn't know what to say. I'm gonna be absolutely honest, because I, we were friendly. You want to stay friendly with your neighbors. You want to be on good terms, but I was a little taken back by the wall. I said, I guess I'm stuck with this wall. I really didn't know what to say, you know, I mean, I knew that they did, um, they had approval, so I just, I guess you could say I just let it go. This year is different. May came. Lori told me all about her little project of building a platform to hold a little contraption that rolls out their solar cover. I told it the truth. I don't care what you do. It's none of my business. Good luck with your project, really. You know, and I didn't care. I really didn't care. That was in May. I, I watched them all in May. I watched Jorge work back there with his dad. I'm sure it's a well-built deck. June came, still working. Fourth of July came and to my surprise, sitting in my backyard at level ground level, was to see men standing on this deck that was supposed to be built solely for the purpose to hold a contraption to roll out a pool cover. And that's not what it's being used for. I've seen 15 people up on that deck, back and forth, Jorge, his wife, his child. You know, again, in the back of that deck, not that it faces my property, but in defense of Marcia, again, they put a picket fence. Why would you choose a picket fence? But they did. I got a problem with a lot of this. I just want to see on my side of the property, there is a six-foot panel on the side of my garage. Okay? That should be, if they can make that eight feet high rather than six feet high, that would help block out this deck that they built. That deck is five feet off the ground. The patio is five feet off the ground. Back to their patio, they did use pavers and granted with pavers, you don't, you normally have to put in any kind of drainage. But that's if it's done correctly with stone dust and polymeric sand. But that's not what they use. And they in fact used a unlicensed individual to put down those pavers because I saw him, because he used to work for Good Look Landscaping. Okay, so now next door, we did retaining walls. We did everything that Mr. Bill wanted. We put in French straining. We put in, catch basins. That, we didn't stop there. We put in two cul-de-sac 10 by 10 concrete basins underground, 10 feet away from the property line on the right side, which would be, I believe Carolyn and Steve are number 19. We did everything by the books. We had, uh, blueprints, drawings done by, uh, Swayby Architect. We spent a lot of money. We did our retaining walls right. When we extended our patio, we made sure that it was done on our side of the fence line, not on Carolyn and Steve's property line. We, it was fenced. Then we extended our patio. Everything that we did, I had excavating machines back there, diggers, you name it. We did all of this, this giant project without interfering with anybody around us or our neighbors. When we did our pool, just so you know, we installed the pool as well and, uh, it was, the installation took place in August. I was told that my pool had to be- I was told that my pool had to be two feet, I believe, two feet away from my existing retaining walls. I told Ms. Carolina when I brought in the drawings that, um, I said, you know, we pushed it out, actually, I think almost five feet, and she said, oh, that's great, Valerie, I like that. I said, thank you. So back to Jorge Pava building that plank uh, that attaches to that back deck, the new part of it, uh, where he said he got injured. Uh, he got injured because the pool is too close to an existing retaining wall, something that I was just told this August that I couldn't do, but, but they did. Now, the reason why they did is because they did it without a permit. Again, let's not forget that they were denied a permit in twenty nineteen when they originated this project. This is the reason why, if you look again at his pictures of his original patio, if you look at the patio on the right, close to my pro- property, you'll see a little fence and there's a child's toy in front of it. And then you look to the left of that patio where Jorge has a chair claiming that it's dangerous. They purposely left that open. Okay, they could have fenced that little section. That little section could have been fenced where the chair is. They purposely left that open because they knew. Just give it time, and when the building department goes away and everything gets quiet, next year, we'll continue our deck. And that is why they didn't fence where that chair is, so that they can continue their illegal deck causing injury to his leg because it should have never been that close to the wall to begin with. Okay? Now again, I don't have a problem with the pool, the patio, the deck. What I want to see is proper drainage installed because that is in fact a patio that was not done with the proper materials. And I can send you pictures. I have sent Bill some pictures already, and if you're able to zoom in on it, that's fine. But if not, I can get an up close shot for it. There's about two inches of concrete uh, slabbed across the cinder block wall that extends their patio. So basically, I watched it being built. Cinder block wall went up five feet high. They then filled it with all kinds of rock, stone. Phil went into it. Uh, they covered over the stairs. There used to be stairs in their backyard. Okay, that brought you down from that retaining wall. Again, that existing retaining wall is five feet high. There was a staircase that brought you down to that bottom part of the yard, to the level part of the yard where the pool was being built. But they wanted that patio, so they filled in those stairs and they created this cinder block wall. Again, filled it on top, and then on top, they covered it with about two inches of concrete. Now you and I, I don't need to be an engineer. I'm just a regular lady at home with my children, but however, my husband's family comes from a family of builders, the Mafays, out of Harrison. My husband's family did the retaining walls that you see on ninety-five as sound barriers, okay? So we understand building. Okay, it's not a first house. This is not a first rodeo with the amount of work we did in our backyard. We understand building, okay? Uh, everybody knows that if you do two, uh, two inches or so of concrete like that, you're not going to have proper drainage. The water has to drain somewhere. Where is it pitched? It's pitched with the grade of my property, again, going down. And then I guess it bears off to the right and it's draining on my side. So we need proper draining. Okay, I need his six-foot panel fence that's on the side of my garage. I would like to see it raised to eight. Okay, that picket fence needs to go. I have absolutely no property. With that retain, with the five-foot wall and the three-foot fence, that's eight feet. Okay, not only that, even before they built this illegal deck, I have no access to the side of my garage. Whether it's my garage or even just the pavers, you're still looking at a safety hazard. I'm gonna tell you why. Because when you go onto the Pava's patio, there is no way down to the ground level where the pool is. So Jorge and Lori, or anybody, would have to scale over a three-foot fence and then jump down off of a five-foot retaining wall to get down to the ground level of the property. Now, to me, that's a safety issue all around, whether it be the Pava's family, their four-year-old son, or me or my husband at fifty-six trying to scale over an eight-foot height of a three-foot fence, five-foot jump down to get to my gutters to clean. I haven't cleaned my gutter since twenty nineteen, since this project, since they installed this pool. I need to know, am I gonna have access to my garage? My garage is ninety-eight years old. Twenty-twenty-three, it turns a hundred. My house turned to a hundred years old this year. And we let, we take a lot of pride in our property. Okay, we spent a lot of money. I think you know, some people know the amount of work that we put into this house. Um, I just don't want to see any damage to that ninety-eight-year-old garage with a copper patinaed roof that you will never find. I'm the only one. I have no access to my garage. I'm okay with that. I can do leaf fitters. You know, that's an option. But I need to know that the pavers are gonna allow me to get back there, should I need to get back there, and that it's not gonna be an issue. But again, you're talking about scaling over a three-foot fence and then jumping down five feet. What they should have done, even for themselves, was to have built stairs or something to get you down to that property. My property is the same. I have a first tier. My walls are almost four feet high. We were told by Mr. Bill, we had to have at least three, three feet of fencing going around those retaining walls, which we did. But we also have stairs that'll bring you down to the ground level. That's the difference. And we have proper drainage in store, uh, in, uh, in, in place. Okay, so, um, those are some uh, issues. Let me just go over my notes here, because I was taking plenty of notes while Jorge was talking. Uh, let me just point out that one of the pictures that Jorge presented, uh, is not even near the pool, but it's actually at, uh, at the front of his house on the side. It's the back door leading off of his kitchen at the front of the house, making it about, I don't know, twenty feet away from the pool. It's, it has nothing to do with the pool. It's at the front of the house. So all that picture that he showed you of all of an overgrown area is not even near the pool. Prior to them putting that pool in, I actually had trees that went down the side. Uh, Mrs. Pinto lived there. She was an older woman. She lost her husband. It was overgrown. I will say that. It was overgrown. But to refer to this property as abandoned, as Mr. Jorge Pava refers to it as, is trifling. Um, it's not abandoned property. A woman lived there that wasn't able to upkeep it the way we do, and I understand that. They cleared away the debris. Of course, it looks better. However, there's a privacy issue here. Everybody wants privacy. Uh, as far as, uh, living next door to the cranes, we can't compare the property because their house shares land and a driveway. It's a shared driveway and it's a shared land situation. We outright own our property and our driveway and our land. There's a difference. Therefore, we don't have to share. Um, when you share property in a driveway, you can't create privacy with shrubs and trees, otherwise you wouldn't be able to drive onto your property. Uh, so there's a difference. Of, of course, they're wide open to the cranes. Okay? Again, I'm not against, uh, what they're looking to do. I just simply want to make sure that the six-foot panel is raised, and I want full privacy. I don't want any picket at top. I want to see the three-foot picket fences removed and replaced with full panel, three-foot fence. I want to see drainage in place. Okay, where they access their pool, again, because they're accessing a pool, this is, these are, their house is unique. Their house is unique, I will say. Um, because of the elevation of it, they have a back deck, an existing back deck off of their house that is very high. And it brings you down, uh, well, there's a set of stairs that goes down on the left towards the cranes, but then there's also a set of stairs that comes down on the right towards my side, it leading you into the pool area. Again, this is an area that they use to access a pool. If I wanted to be on public display, I would have joined Lake Isle. Um, but this is why we got a pool in our yard. Um, so, you know, I know that right now they have an active permit in with Mr. Bill for additional fencing. Hopefully, that fencing is not picket and that it's a full privacy panel is what I'm asking as well. Um, let me see my notes. I know Jorge said that this project was over two years ago, but it wasn't. It was just last year, twenty nineteen. Um, uh, Nathan, I appreciate you saying, let's be honest. What is this being used for? And you are in fact correct, that this is being used for pleasure, this deck. Um, not for the sole purpose of a contraption that rolls out a, uh, solar cover. Um, which by the way, that contraption is made for an in-ground pool at level, not made for an above-ground pool. A bubble cover is meant to be cut to size, so that, such that it floats just on the top of the water of the pool. Uh, the pool being only twelve feet across and eighteen, you know, well, twenty-four feet in length, it's very easy to just yank it out of the water and hang it on your fence on your side. Very simple, but they wanted to get this thing, and I understand, but that's not what it's being used for. And if this deck gets approved, uh, this will give them free rein to do what they want, which means fifteen, twenty people are gonna be on that deck. And I don't think that's fair to the neighbors behind them and on the side of them. Uh, again, the cranes are about, well, I don't know. You put the properties together, you got from left to right, maybe a hundred feet, so they're about a good seventy-five feet away. Their patio for this pool and their pool and their fencing is literally on the property line where I need to live. Okay, and I need a quality of life with my young children in the yard. Um, my garage door's right there. I don't want to stop living in my yard, uh, to accommodate this. So, uh, this is why I need full panels and fencing and such. I don't want to see, again, towels hanging over that fence. I don't want to see neighbors and people over literally hanging out on the fence like as if they're standing on a boardwalk. Um, I appreciate the neighbor saying, hey, Val, how are you over there? Good to see. I'm glad you're feeling better. Um, I love all my neighbors, but I don't want anybody talking to me when I'm in my backyard from a fence that's, you know, property that's like eight feet high. I, I just can't have it. Um, so. Um, again, I don't expect anybody to tear anything down. Uh, I just want to see and ensure that it's all done right and that everybody's happy, and we can just go on with a nice summer of twenty twenty-one. Uh, so if we can just get those, I really hope that Jorge and I and Lori can work that out because at the end of the day, we have to still be neighbors. You guys will go home. Okay? And again, I'm not looking to tear down anything that they've built. I would probably have to say that if I know Jorge and his father, that's a well-built deck. I saw the, uh, I saw the, uh, I can't think of a word now, but they built it right. I've been on the deck. Lori showed me. Okay, so we are gonna be honest, like Nathaniel, uh, Na- Nathan said, uh, and I told Lori my thoughts on that in May when she did it. Uh, she asked me, you know, Valerie, where did you get your trees? I said, what do you want to know about my trees? And she said, can you come outside? And she told me someone called in. And I said, well, she showed me the deck. When I looked at it and went over there, I said, the deck looks great. I said, but, uh, you know, this, this, this railing that you put up, that was your first mistake. Trying to cover it with fake grass is your second mistake. It looks very tacky. I'm just being honest. Um, and that, you know, gee, you probably, if you had put in some kind of trees or shrubs or a higher fence, you might, you know, somebody probably wouldn't have called in on you, you know? Because she told me she didn't, she didn't get a permit, you know? And, uh, and I said, well, I don't really care. It's none of my business. I'm okay with it, you know, but, uh, I just, you know, a, a little bit more thought should have went into that with, uh, trees and shrubs and such. I did meet with Jorge and Lori around August twenty-third to, uh, think maybe we can meet halfway with some of this. I need privacy. You know? And they agreed, you know, I think Jorge right now has an active uh, permit in for fencing, and hopefully it's not, yeah, hopefully it's not picket, Lori. Uh, you know?
It will be solid, I would promise.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And, you know, I, I know I, I
I'm in, clean your gutter.
Yeah, and, uh, I know that
Sorry, guys, just interrupt for a second. We should clarify, this is kind of like a board meeting.
Oh, sorry, hon.
Yeah. Or they kind of need to talk to the board, and the board will ask questions, and then we'll
Yeah, yeah, okay, so yeah, I mean, um, like I said, I, I met with Jorge in August and, uh, you know, I said, look, maybe we could somehow work something out, meet you halfway, and you know, uh, they were worried about, you know, can they get a variance on that six-foot panel? You know, can they make it an eight-foot panel and get a variance, you know? And, uh, I know Jorge said he would look into it, and I think Mr. Bill was working on it possibly. I'm not sure really where's that, where that is at.
Well, Valerie, I don't mean to interrupt you, but you're getting ahead of yourself. This, this particular variance that they're looking for pertains to the deck and only the deck. If they have a, a, a request for a variance to put a higher fence in, that's going to be at a, at a later meeting, which by all means, you're invited to and welcome to share your input at that point. But I'd like to stay on topic the best we can, all right?
Okay, yeah.
Just the deck at this point in time.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, if, if fencing or whatever can't be in, I, let me just, I just say this quickly, and then I'll let you, I'll let you go, Tom, to someone else. Uh, is going back to what you said, is that is it possible to lower this deck? I mean, if we can't come with other solutions, I'm okay with raising fences and such and doing whatever we need to do. But, uh, if it can't be done and these other things can't be done, then yeah, I mean, unfortunately, it's like the, the deck would have to be lowered. You know, to support that contraption, you know, I, I, I'm hearing what you're saying about that, but I'm not looking for that to be done. I'm hoping we can move forward with fencing and shrubs and make it work and proper drainage. So that's it from me. I'm sorry.
Your input, appreciate it. Anybody else from the public that would like to, uh, speak? Please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
There you go.
Oh, okay. Uh, this is Al, and I'm Marcia Vaifor. We're at one sixteen Bella Vista Street. Uh, we've lived here for thirty-six years. And, uh, I think it's pretty clear, and Jorge and Lori Ann's pictures just really prove my point, how you can just see into our whole yard, our house. I mean, everything. I would like to say that during our thirty-six years living here, before Jorge and Lori Ann were there, uh, the Pintos had what they called a dollhouse, which was built right next to Valerie's garage. And that dollhouse took up practically the whole length of that lower portion of their yard. So as far as the privacy issue for that lower yard, there was privacy. Um, we didn't have all of this openness that, you know, is trying to be presumed now. Um, I did send some pictures in with my letter, and the first and second photos does show the shrubbery that was in the yard after this quote dollhouse was taken down. It was taken down when they, uh, Mrs. Pinto put the house up for sale. Um, I don't know how long the Jorge's are there. I'm not sure. What is it, three years, four years? So prior to that, this dollhouse was there. So there was shrubbery. Um, the deck to the house has always been there, but because there was this dollhouse in the lower yard, it did give us some privacy. So it just wasn't as open as, you know, he's trying to say it is. Um, I also, in an attempt to have privacy on my own, I planted a row of our bloody trees over twenty years ago, but because I don't get enough sun uh, due to some growth on the southern property line of my property, these are as high as these trees will grow. So I don't even have the opportunity to put in taller trees. And quite honestly, I don't think I should have to at this point. Um, I did send the photo, number four shows Valerie's house after she did all of her um, yard work. She did plant trees, which she said are called green giant evergreen trees, and you can And you can see how nicely they've grown. And it's afforded her privacy and also us privacy and they're very nice looking. So getting back to the point that when planning was being done for this pool. It would have been nice if some consideration would have been given to the fact that they are overlooking our yard. And they're aware of it because of the deck that was on the house originally. Um, I know the pool and the first deck. Is permitted and it was approved, but I will say, we were very disturbed with the whole thing. And quite honestly, we never really wanted to be, we never were, the neighbors, the complaining neighbors. So while we didn't like it, nothing was ever said. Also, nothing was ever said to us during the whole process of what. They were planning to do. It would have been nice if perhaps they said, I mean, we're neighbors. I've never spoken to Jorge and Lori was just actually twice. One uh, block party day and then after the erection of everything and probably after the call I made. When the second edition was done and she knew there was a problem. She just said that they were gonna put in this fake grass, which again. Alright, it covers a little bit, but as you can see from the pictures when somebody's standing on the deck. They can still overlook right into our yard. And again, because it's so close, it just feels like they're right there. You know, they're part of us. So we find it extremely intrusive. It's uncomfortable. And then no privacy, so. Our thing is, we would like something high enough. I can't even tell you how high. Because I don't know all the dimensions. I'm assuming maybe twelve feet, but I don't know. I don't want to have to look at people when they're on their deck. And pools and I don't want them looking down on us. So whatever the height needs to be, that's what I'm requesting. Um, and if it turns out we have this second. Deck or whatever you wanna call it has to be taken down, I'm still requesting. A privacy fence or something high enough so that I don't have, we don't have to see them and they can't see us. When they're using their deck and pool. And I would appreciate that. I understand how you're saying now, this meeting is for one variance. And how you just said to Valerie about a permit for the fencing. I don't know if that. This is the first I'm hearing about something like that. I don't know if that includes a fencing for us. But I would like to request that. If possibly these things can all be combined, because they're all part and parcel of the same thing. And we have been dealing with this now since the beginning of. This year. I mean, this is practically gone on almost for a year now, dealing with this. So because it's all part and parcel, why can it not be combined? So it doesn't have to be so stretched out. And I would very much appreciate your considerations.
I may just add one, one comment on, from my perspective. A above-ground pool in small areas usually come with a, a climbing fence. Where the, the fence is on the ground levels, which is equal to where the pool sits. You climb up the fence, you jump in the pool, you go swim and you come out, you climb up and go back down the fence. That would have been, that would have been really, and considering the circumstances here, the sizes of our neighbors, you know, the. The uh, the topography, the size of each lot, tha- that would make sense. So if, what I would see is maybe a bobbing head in the water and I would be a little bit upset, but at least I would, I understood that. All of a sudden, there's a deck and people are walking on it and they're having a grand old time and they're just gazing down at me like I'm, so. I don't, I don't understand why the deck was there anyway. Such a small area, small lots for all of us, why the deck has to go on and. An above-ground pool in this particular environment is beyond me. So this causes all the problem. That's what I have to say.
Okay, thank you very much for your input. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak?
Hi Chairman Ringwald. Um, I'm Susan Crane. I live at eleven Hollywood Avenue. And I live next door to Lori Ann and Jorge Pava with my husband Tom. Um, we do share a driveway. At the bottom, our yard split into two. And um, Tom and I have lived here for thirty-three years and I have to say that. All of our neighbors, especially the ones on this call, have beautiful, beautiful homes that they've put. A tremendous amount of work into, as we have also. The Pavers have done a magnificent job and um, for whatever reason, taste, time, effort. We have enjoyed everything that they have done to your, their yard because we can see into their yard from our deck. And the topography of Hollywood Avenue is that we're on a hill. The hill starts at the top and goes down and the elevations of our homes allow us. Without a deck, without a pool, without anything from just standing in your bedroom window to see into your neighbor's yards. We're very, we're all very close. Our yards are on top of one another and that's just the nature of the grade of the land. So I can appreciate um, the requ- the, the need for privacy. Um, I think all of us would like to have a little privacy, would like to imagine that we're sitting in our patio or our deck. Alone without anybody seeing us. However, it's just the nature of the, the size of our homes, the height of our homes. And mostly the topography of the land that allows us to be able to see into our neighbor's property. Um, perhaps maybe higher fencing, you know, allowing higher fencing. I think the um, allowable height is six feet. Um, and anything that's behind the back of the house is allowed to be six feet, maybe in certain cases. There could be less of an effort with a variance to, to ha- to be able to put a higher fence, depending on where your. Yard fits in the topography, that might ease some things in the village of Tuckahoe. But um, I just wanted to make mention of that, that it's just the nature of how our, where our homes are built. That unfortunately, we don't all have the total privacy that we would require.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, uh, Sue?
Just to that point, if I may again, I've lived here thirty-six years and she's right. I look out my yard, I could see next door and vice versa. That never bothered me and I'm, I'm loving this neighborhood and I never had a problem with the Pintos uh, and behind me. Uh, or uh, the ones where Val's house, I forget their names. I never had any problem. They all go look out their window and they see me, we waved to each other. I have a, a pool. Right on my property line, which is six, it's actually ten feet above my property. And if you're standing on the deck. Now you're sixteen feet above my property. So it's a whole different ballgame. Take the deck out of there, take all it out of there, I'm fine. So I just wanna clarify that. I'm not here to say I'm, I don't want people looking around. I understand where I'm living. This is intrusive, beyond intrusive.
Okay, thank you for your input. Is there anybody else who would like to comment?
Uh, yes, Tom, just one, uh, I'd just like to weigh in one last time, if I may. Let me just first say, I, hi Sue. Sue makes a point, you know, topography, I get it all and, and it, you know, the houses do go down in grade and such. Uh, however, let's not forget that this particular area of the Paver's yard. From the front of the house to the back, again, there's a retaining wall that begins at a foot and. At, like I said earlier, as you go down into the yard, it becomes a five-foot wall. It's a retaining wall because it's retaining their property. At level. Now you go downstairs to that bottom level, the actual ground level where they drop this pool. That's just one part of their yard, that's maybe twenty feet. To their left. Behind, directly behind the Paver's house, they have a whole, they got a giant yard is what I'm getting at. They have a giant yard, a really big yard with six-foot fencing all around it. So my point is, is that for them to put that pool in that little spot on the side of my garage, that was not because of the topography. That was a choice. That was a choice that the Pavers made, uh, because it seemed like a grand idea and I get it. However, if they had put the pool on their grassy land that is level with everyone else. Then a six-foot fence would suffice and nobody would see them and they could climb into their pool with a fen- uh, with a ladder. Like everybody else. They are not the only ones with a pool. I know that I am new to the pool, not my first, not my first rodeo with a pool, but new with a pool here. We have about, what, five other families? Five, there's about five or six of us at this point now that have pools. But the difference between everyone's pool and the Pavers is that everyone's pool is at ground level. So the six-foot fencing all around it works, shrubs work. The way they dropped their pool and built it up doesn't really work. Um, the thing is, is that I cannot continue to look past the fact that. Again, it was a choice that they made. They were denied in twenty nineteen. They were told, no, you cannot put this deck in. And I'm sure there was a reason why. I'm not, I'm, I'm not the building inspector, but if they would deny it, it had to be for a reason. And um, they had a blatant disregard for that, so let's not forget that, that that pool could have been built someplace else. Uh, if it, it, you know, i- is what it comes down to. Uh, with their original patio. Again, uh, I didn't even know this myself, that when you open up a permit, you submit plans, drawings, et cetera, yada yada. And then when it's all said and done, there's supposed to be a closing permit. Now again, when we did our work, we had ver- there was numerous site visits. I think Mike came. You know, to make sure the job was going, da da da, made sure the drainage was put in place. I remember them coming out and specifically, they could not cover up the drainage until they saw it with their own eyes and then we could continue the job. So, you know, um, had a closing happened with that original patio and pool. You know, maybe we wouldn't really be at this point. It's, you know, my last thing on this is that. Uh, although I put it in writing and emailed it to uh, Bill yesterday. Uh, I just wanted on the record to show with everyone here that uh, back to that cinder block wall built right on the property line. Extending an existing retaining wall, I'd like to see it aesthetically matched. Okay, similar match to the existing wall with some type of stone veneer. I'm not gonna look at a hideous cinder block wall like my yard is a parking lot after I spent fifty grand on my backyard. Okay, so that wall needs to aesthetically uh, match. The existing wall, if that's in fact what they were doing. They extended an existing wall, therefore they have to similarly match the wall. Aside from the drainage. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? So, to be clear, this is the zoning board of appeals. What we are charged with is. Listening to people who are looking for relief from the existing code. If it's a reasonable request, we, we will grant it. If it's an unreasonable cre- uh, request, we generally do not grant it. Some of the things mentioned tonight, in my opinion, have nothing to do with the code. They are more like nice to have, which I appreciate and I understand and I don't disagree with anybody. However, we are charged with. The code that's in front of us. The denial that's in front of us right now has to do with that deck. So, you know, Bill, I would ask if you could please provide. Documentation whether or not some of these thing, it, what am I try- trying to say? That everything is up to code. Minus the deck that they put in for the solar cover. For instance, the cinder block wall that was mentioned and the supposed lack of draining that was mentioned. Are all those things up to code? Yes or no? I mean, not to answer that question now. I'd like to have that information for the next meeting.
Well, and Tom, is that something, you know, that's not part of this discussion though? That's a separate issue for the. Building department to deal with um, independently, correct?
That is correct. That is the point I'm trying to make. Thank you.
So, actually, uh, the concerns, which I, as Tom said, I, and correct me, Tom, if I'm misstating this here. You know, the concerns regarding drainage or whether things were done to code. You, you have an absolute right to be concerned about those if you want. However, that's not for the zoning board, that's for the building department. So the building department would handle that directly, that concern directly. The, it's not part of something we can consider as part of this application. The back fence, the structure that's being built there, that can all be part of this application, but not the pre-existing. Already completed and already permitted patio and retaining wall. That would be a direct discussion with the building department.
Correct. And if you want to comment on future dated, you know, requests for variances to put up a tall fence or whatever. Yes, you have every right to attend that as well. But to remember Jackman's point, this is about the existing deck. Which apparently was put up without the proper approval ahead of time and they're seeking relief at this point in time. So all your points are well taken. I'm just, you know, I know it, it's a pain in the butt, but you know, that's what's in front of us now. And uh, Nathan's correct, you know, the, the wall and et cetera are very good points that Bill can provide answers to. But that's not what's in front of us. So Bill, if you could, please. We would appreciate you providing answers on that to the people that have concerns. He- here's, here's my opinion right now. What, what we need is mentioned in the um, work session, uh, Jorge is. Signed and sealed drawings from you, a survey. And we'd like to know, you know, if you could provide driving, uh, drawing, sorry, that would show what you can do as a right. I just wanna remind everybody, yes, these houses are on top of each other, so is mine. However, it is their property and everyone has a right to put on their property whatever they so choose to do. Provided it's within the code. And yeah, some things around me I'm not happy with, but it's in the code and it is what it is.
And I think that's an important note that.
Force people to put up, you know, a green fence versus a white fence or, you know, when it, it's, 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 it's not a pervy.
Hold on one second. And I, I think an important caveat here is. What makes a, um, I shouldn't say good, what makes it, uh. What can create a disagreement with a neighbor and what is legal and we're almost more like a judge here. We're judging the legality of projects. So what can kind of make a good neighbor relationship versus what they can actually do according to law? As we said, the law clearly allows in the village for you to build a pool within five feet. Now is that. Would I love that if my neighbor put in a pool five feet from my property? Maybe not, but they are allowed to and it's not something. That's not kind of what we can get involved in. We can get involved with uh, a deck that is within that five feet. Or built without a permit or, you know, so I'm trying, I'm probably explaining this poorly, but you know. We're very limited in what, you know, uh, there are, you know, in the United States, there are so many property rights and this is, you know, it is their property. They are allowed to build according to code. And we can really only get involved when it violates the code.
So yeah, again, and Bill, what I really wanted to ask you to provide is, is, is the existing patio, not the back section that was put in for the solar panel. But the existing stone patio, is that up to code? Is everything that they've done so far, with the exception of this solar panel piece, up to code?
Tom, when a patio was put in, someone comes in, takes out a permit, they install the patio. We go into a final inspection. There's no inspections between when a permit is issued for a patio and a final inspection. We can't stand over each project and oversee the job for the homeowner. Okay, so if there are things that are underneath the patio that are not correct and we're not aware of them. There isn't anything we could do about it. Except now when we find out that there may be a problem. So when the problem occurred, it would have been nice to receive a phone call at that time so that we could have checked to see if there was or there wasn't.
So that we could have checked to see if there was or there wasn't a problem.
Was that the original project signed off though?
The, on the final, yeah, we went there, there was a patio there, that's all you're looking for.
And that patio is within the code.
He had a patio, an existing patio, all he did was take old pavers up and put new pavers down.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, can I just say something? Tom?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, uh, there was no.
It has to stay on topic though Valerie, okay, I mean, I understand all your other concerns, but remember what's in front of us now.
Yeah, no, I just want to make a point that it wasn't old pavers removed and new pavers put down, there were no pavers there. They extended it, that's why there's a five-foot cinder block wall there, they extended the property and then they filled it. There, they dropped fill. Into, so underneath the patio, pavers is fill. Uh, and then on top of the fill is covered with probably about two inches or more of uh, concrete. Creating a drainage issue, you know, so yeah.
Just you bring this up separately with.
Oh yeah, no, I'll, I'll keep it all with Bill.
Common state that it is within code, so I, I, I'm not going to argue with the building inspector.
Right, no, not at all, I'll let uh, I'll let Mr. Bill, you know, address all of that, I just wanted to clear that up. That there wasn't pavers there before is, is the point that I was trying to make.
All right, that's an issue you should take up separately with him, please.
Okay, thanks.
Tom, can I also suggest to the zoning board, especially in this case, that the. Members stop by and take a look at the uh, site before the next meeting so that. They're, they get a better perspective of what's going on?
Uh, yes, one of the next things coming out of my mouth, is it okay with all of the neighbors if we have a site visit? So not just you, Jorge, but you know, if, if we want to go to your house Valerie, or to the home behind that, uh, is that okay?
Absolutely.
So if I wander in your backyard, you won't call the police on me?
Not at all, but let me know before I let Coco out in the yard.
You have a big dog.
And I gotta clean up the poop.
Fair enough. Uh, okay, so I, I think we got a, we got a thumbs up from you.
Can I just say something?
Yes.
I'm just curious. How you're asking for signed and sealed drawings by an architect? If he's, if a variance is being applied for now, shouldn't you have had these drawings for this meeting already?
Yes.
Okay, so this is my point where I'm saying how things are just getting dragged on and on. And that's why I'm just requesting as far as the fences. If it could be part of this second area that was built.
That's up to the applicant.
Tom, you have to remember that the fences are a separate issue that currently do not require any variances.
So a twelve-foot fence couldn't be put in the yard without a variance?
No, he would need a variance for that, but his current fences do not require one.
The current ones, I know, but we're asking for higher ones, so that.
But maybe he, maybe the applicant doesn't want to install higher ones.
The point I was making, we, we're here, you know, if he doesn't want to put up tall offenses, he doesn't have to. We can't make him put up tall offenses.
I understand, but didn't he say at this meeting he would?
Yeah, I believe he did, but if he wants to put up tall offenses, he's going to have to ask for a variance to put up tall offenses.
Yes, we, we. We, uh, like, um, our neighbor thought it could be discussed in here as part of. To help everyone feel more comfortable if you guys would allow sort of how she's suggesting. That we could just raise the fence too, we would like to raise the fence. We were, we were trying to do the right thing and leave it at the right level, but if it could be grouped into this, it would be great. But I guess you're saying, no, we need to apply separately.
Or, or unless, unless I could show it in the revised plans that, that are required now for the next meeting, I, I could incorporate all of that into it.
Bill, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Uh, this, his current pool deck, is he limited on height on that fence because it's on a pool deck?
It's not really considered a fence on a deck because it's around the pool, it's a guard. And that's, that's required to be forty-two inches high.
So the issue is really, and I'm just gonna do a pantomime here, is that. They have a fence, you know, they can have a six-foot fence in the rear of the property, correct? On the property, okay.
Correct.
Problem is, it's a six-foot fence as it comes across and then the property drops down here. And if they put a six-foot fence in there, it doesn't even cover the pool, am I kind of, got it there, Bill?
Correct.
So the issue is whether or not they can continue the six-foot fence across the drop.
Yes, and if he, if he asked for that and we made it a variance, you guys could approve it.
Okay, so. I'm hesitant, because that would be almost a twelve-foot tall fence.
Gentlemen, I, I think, I think if, if, if I may, in, 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 in the actual new deck. Instead of having that uh, uh, that greenery that I have there now at forty-two inches. Is it possible that I could put a six-foot fence on top of the deck? Therefore, when the, when the neighbors are behind us, they could see a six-foot fence and then behind it, they could see another six-foot fence.
Love.
Above, above the old one, so they would see. A fence here, they would see a fence here and another one over here.
Sorry, we, we are talking a lot about the height of the fence above this deck.
Yes.
But we have to remember, the code only allows a quarter of the circumference of the pool. So chances are you're gonna have to remove a lot of that deck. So, let's not forget that.
Correct, but that, that's why we're here for, for, for.
Right.
Variance, right, because it's, it's, right now, it's more of it, right?
Chances are that.
Technically, technically, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's, because if you look at the circumference of the pool and you think about twenty-five percent, which is the quarter. That is permitted, chances are that a lot of that is gonna be removed in order.
Right, essentially the side, the side, the side of the pool would have to get removed, but then I could keep the back and not do any of the fencing.
In the back, remember, you're gonna have to be at least five feet from the property line.
That's not a problem, yeah.
Isn't that why we're asking for a variance if we could?
That's, that's correct, that's why they're here, seeking the variance.
Yes.
What we're saying is, if perhaps our variance would get granted. Could we just talk about in this same conversation, the concerns of our neighbors? And also our concerns, you know, because we want to make everyone happy of putting a fence on top of that deck. We would like to put this, a six-foot fence on top of the deck and we could even make it, um. What is it, solid, you know? So, so, you know, if we could just wrap up the conversation together, I think us and our neighbors behind us. And to the side, I think everyone would be happy.
Gary, if they do that, they would have to renotice because maybe the other neighbors wouldn't be happy with the six-foot fence up there.
That's exactly right, so any variance they're going for, they, they've noticed it for this one variance. If they're gonna ask for other variances, they're gonna have to submit new plans, renotice it, start from, start from scratch.
So.
Gotta put everyone on notice.
Before we go down this road, can, can we take a quick breath here? So I, in, in a, in a dress, and Tom, jump in if you want to correct me here. In a dress to the homeowner who was concerned that this was going to take a while. What, this is obviously our first session on this property in front of the zoning board. These tend to take a couple of months, two to three months, just so you know, it, at a minimum, it takes two months to get an approval. And if it's something like this where we don't even have plans at our first meeting, it's going to take longer than that, so that's just something to prepare yourself for. Now, the positive in that is that when they come back to us with the measured drawings so that we actually know what we're dealing with. As far as the actual variances they need for the deck on the pool. At that point, we can assess, where will this fence go, will it be on the deck? Will it be on the property line at, at grade? And at that point, we can modify and they can reapply. It's all part of the process here and we will. Include it as part of this discussion, however, things will, you know, we have to be flexible, things will be um, sent in. And we will have to modify what they're sending in, so the next, a- as uh. Gary is saying here, you know, this takes a little time, especially if we're gonna be adding uh, new things, but yes, absolutely, it's possible for us to. Add a fence, a railing um, into the application, but we first have to see what we're dealing with as far as the existing. Structures, so we need those plans first, Tom, clarify if I'm wrong here. And then once we understand what we're dealing with, at that point, we can start including these other tertiary. Ideas or objectives you and the neighbors can agree on, does that make sense to everyone?
Yes, and I understand. I guess just the point I wanted to make is that for this meeting now, there already should have been drawings and plans. For this meeting and, that's all, it's just.
So, G- Gary, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, could, could, could we in theory put a condition on the approval? He, he, here's what, what I'm wrestling with, if they bring only this issue in front of us now and we say we grant it. And then they do not bother to say, well, you know, the heck with it, I'm not putting up fences. Is there any way we could grant the approval with the condition that they would come back and uh, apply for some form of privacy screening fences or whatever? Or do we have to keep them totally separate?
No, I, I, I think you can make a condition on this one, but I think you would need to know exactly what the condition's gonna be. That they would need a six-foot high fence or something like that.
Before the.
We've done that before with other applications, say, yeah, we're gonna grant you this variance provided you keep a solid six-foot fence or whatever the code is. Because you can't grant a variance, you know, you can't tell them to do something that is not per code.
But Tommy, we, we did that on Underhill Street with Mr. Buble.
That's exactly what I was thinking of, Bill.
But from the owner's perspective, Tom and Gary, wouldn't they have to pay the five hundred, come back in for a whole nother zoning board session?
No, 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 what we would do Nathan is let them amend their thing, re-advertise and then come back, there would be no fee.
Post-approval.
Who's to approve what?
Because that's Tom saying we would give them an approval with a caveat, I'm saying you need to kind of modify the existing, otherwise. Prove it.
Yes, correct, you are correct, Nathan.
And Nate, that, that, that may not work because you can't say, well, you, you, provided you put a six-foot fence over there, but six-foot is not per code. So they may come back to a, of your board or different members saying, no, we don't want a six-foot fence there.
Right. So I, I'm just, I'm just implying, easier way to go forward here is get our plans, decide what's possible with the deck. And then at that point, modify the existing application for, you know, the preferred solution we come up with that makes everybody, or most people happy.
Yep.
Sound reasonable?
Yeah. Jorge, sound reasonable to you?
I prefer you not have to pay another five hundred dollars and go through this all over again, so.
Absolutely.
Better to modify what we have in front of us.
Just as a, as a question, uh, because I'm curious, what, why do you notify people that are on Alpine Street? That's some distance away from this.
Mary Ann, Mary Ann said I had to do two hundred. Mo- feet or something and I had to mail out thirty-eight letters.
I think you went two hundred miles.
Oh, two hundred mile, yeah. Gee, um, yeah, I know, I don't even know where Alpine Tree, it is, but it was thirty-eight letters, it took about like three hours to do all the paperwork.
Yeah, I, I.
And two hundred sixty-four dollars.
Yeah.
Of postage.
No, I, I just bring the point up in case you have to do that again, I, I would double check, I think you went too far.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, any other comments before we sum this up? So I just want to be clear, so again, Jorge, you're going to provide us with signed and sealed drawings. You're going to provide us with a survey and hopefully a sketch out of what you could do as of right. So that, you know, you wouldn't need a variance from us.
Okay.
And then on the separate issues, Bill, if you could, well, I think you already, you already answered the question. And Valerie, if you have further questions about drainage and the uh, concrete or cinder block wall, you need to take those up with the building department, please.
Oh, yes, yes, I know that, thank you.
Any other questions?
I, I guess we're gonna expect to see somebody from the board in our backyards at some point?
Yes, please, please don't sic any wild animals on us, but yes, uh, if you'd like, I'll, you know, of course, I'd ring your doorbell before I go in your backyard.
No, that's fine, we're good, thank you, thank you much.
Any other members have anything, John?
No, I'm fine.
Chris, anybody?
No, that's why I see revised drawings, that's, and I'll take it from there.
Public hearing open, that's correct?
Yeah, I was just about to open it and we'll leave it open, yes, so I'm going to make a motion to open the public hearing on fifteen Hollywood Avenue East. Oh, I did that, I.
You did that, you're just gonna keep it open.
Make a motion to keep the public hearing open on fifteen Hollywood Avenue East, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so again, you guys understand the deal, next month you'll prevent, will present what you have. We'll take a look at it, at the, at very best, you know, we can then close the public hearing and then make a decision the following month. So as member Jackman pointed out, this is going to take you at least another two meetings to wrap up, member Jackman?
I just want to clarify, do we need actual physical hard copy of what he, the signed and sealed, or can we just get a scan? I don't need the full huge.
No, Nathan, what we'll do is we'll get a PDF and send it to you guys and we'll put the official copies in the record.
There you go.
I don't, I don't want them to spend all that money on, you know, six huge copies for all of them.
Agreed. Any other business?
No.
All right, thank you, I'm going to make a motion to close this meeting, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, thank you folks.
Have a nice holiday season.
Everyone have a merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Happy holiday.
Happy Hanukkah, have a nice New Year.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.